This is the city of Tacoma Park City Council meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Okay, Mayor Stewart, Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Present.
Councilmember Kostic.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Siemens.
Still here.
Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Circe.
Present.
All right, thank you. Yes, you noticed that Mayor Stewart is not with us tonight. She's at the Blair High School graduation celebration and has asked me to sit in for her this evening. I'm Mayor Pro Tem Terry Siemens. And so I ask for your patience as I work through this agenda tonight. Does anyone have any changes they'd like to see in tonight's agenda? I would just like to bring people's attention to the upcoming agendas that we have. On June 7th, the city council is having a special meeting for the presentation and work session on pending Montgomery County Building Energy Performance Standards. And then next Wednesday, June 9th, we have a regular meeting where we'll be discussing recognition for youth council graduates, proclamation of Chesapeake Bay Awareness Week, Tool Design Group presentation on Maple Avenue Complete Street Project. We have a large voting schedule that next Wednesday, resolution authorizing execution of an employment agreement with the new city manager Jamal Fox, Resolution expressing appreciation for the Tacoma Park Senior Leadership Team. The first reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 8.36, which is the Commercial Management Districts and Authorities. This relates to the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority. We have a single reading ordinance approving the FY 2022 Community Grant Awards. Single reading ordinance approving extension of contract for auditing services ordinance regarding my safe. Is this okay? An ordinance regarding safe city managers emergency authority, resolution regarding resumption of quasi judicial hearings for the city boards and commissions. And then we'll have a work session, Contract for Lunch and Learn Program, discussion of committees and city managers' presentation briefing or briefing on the American Rescue Plan Act. The following Monday, we're going to have another special meeting for presentation and work session on boundaries for the minor master plan that's upcoming. All right, I'd like to begin with our work tonight with a couple of special items. The want to recognize the Safe Grow Photo Contest winners. Is someone going to make a presentation with that?
Yes. Hi, Councilmember Siemens. Thank you so much for having me and all of the Safe Grow Contest winners who are on our meeting this evening. So our Safe Grow Photo Contest made a revival this year after the 2020 contest was put on hold due to the growing concerns over the COVID-19 pandemic. In a year of unknowns and uncertainties, Tacoma Park rallied together and supported fellow community members through challenging times and leading to this year's contest theme of Together We Bloom. Our team received several submissions where each were graded very carefully on composition, originality, and creativity, as well as how the photo related to the theme. I wanted to thank my interns Cindy Morales and Kyler Madison for taking on this project and running it from start to finish, as well as the selecting the winners. I wanted to show the winners a sample of our Safe Grow flag, which is on the next slide. They'll be receiving this flag. We're making deliveries at the end of the week, and this is what first place looks like. And of course, second and third would also follow. So without lots of fanfare, I wanted to announce the third place winner is Maeve Monahan, and she is the daughter of Carol Lee Monahan from Ward 2. And this is the picture that Maeve took. And we wanted to thank her for her submission, and it's quite beautiful. Our second place winner is Keith, oh, I'm sorry, and Maeve is also from Ward 2. I'm not sure if I said that. Second place winner is Keith Zoloff. He's from Ward 3, and this is also another beautiful flower and arrangement. And our third place, our first place winner is John Jonathan Kang from Ward 2. So again, I really thank all of our Safe Grow Contest winners for submitting their beautiful flower arrangements and pictures, and we'll be getting out the Safe Grow flags out to them very shortly. So thank you so much for having us again. We really appreciate it.
Yes, and thank you. These, it's amazing, the photos that we got in this year.
Yes, I do not take pictures like that. So thank you all very, very much.
Want to make sure that none of my colleagues had anything they wanted to say. I'm watching here for hands raised. All right, if not, I'd like to move on. Mayor Stewart left a couple of mayoral proclamations that she asked me to read tonight. The first one is regarding the National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And remember, I'm reading this for Mayor Stewart. Whereas in an average year, 724 people die by guns in Maryland. Of these, 446 are homicides, and whereas black people in Maryland are 17 times more likely than white people to die by gun homicide. And whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their residents safe. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than a year of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide, and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in urban gun violence. And whereas in January 2013, Hadea Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 4th, 2021, to recognize her 24th birthday, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadea Pendleton, other victims of gun violence, and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadea's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when they are out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas by wearing orange on June 4th, 2021, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And now therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, on behalf of the council, residents, and staff proclaim the first Friday in June, June 4th, 2021, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Tacoma Park and encourage all residents to wear orange and support efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence. The next mayoral proclamation, again, reading this for Mayor Kate Stewart, is on Immigration Heritage Month, June 2021. Whereas since 2014, Immigration Heritage Month has given people across the United States an opportunity to annually explore their own heritage and celebrate the shared diversity that forms the unique story of America. And whereas, as a nation of immigrants, the United States has benefited from the cultural, culture, ideas, skills, and abilities of those who have come here to work to learn and define freedom and shelter. And whereas in Tacoma Park, we have many first and second generation immigrants as our neighbors. And whereas the city has long history of welcoming immigrants, and it continues to work to build a caring, inclusive, and strong community which celebrates its diversity. And whereas, because of our longstanding commitment to a community that values immigrants and their safety, the city will work to urge the members of the Maryland General Assembly to overturn Governor Hogan's recent vetoes of legislation to ban ICE detention centers in Maryland and prevent law enforcement officers from asking about someone's immigration status during a routine stop and to preclude the Motor Vehicle Administration from sharing personal information with federal immigration officials. Now therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, on behalf of the council, residents, and staff proclaim June as Immigration Heritage Month in Tacoma Park and encourage everyone to commit to ensuring that ours is a welcoming community and welcoming state that upholds the rights of all people to live with dignity and respect. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Siemens, I think we have from, for the gun violence proclamation, we have Vita Larkin and Jared Hughes here, who just going to just briefly say a few words.
That would be fantastic.
Thank you very much, Council of Tacoma Park. My name is Vita Larkin, and on behalf of the Montgomery County Local Group of Moms Demand Action for Gunsense in America, I want to thank you for issuing the proclamation designating June 4th National Gun Violence Awareness Day, which is followed by Wear Orange Weekend, June 5th through 6th, when a coalition of gun violence prevention organizations will raise awareness for gun violence, victims, and survivors, making a public commitment to work together to encourage support and work towards solutions to save lives from gun violence. During the weekend of June 4th through 6th, Maryland Moms Demand Action will be hosting several virtual Wear Orange events to commemorate. We will recognize survivors and honor community partners that support our mission to reduce preventable deaths and injuries. We warmly welcome the town of Tacoma Park to attend in solidarity with our neighbors. And thank you once again for the town of Tacoma Park for doing your part in working towards a solution by recognizing gun violence prevention as a critical safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you guys finish?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you so much for supporting Moms Demand Action and our Wear Orange Weekend with this proclamation. We are so very delighted and moved by your solidarity. And, you know, I got involved with moms because of the Sandy Hook massacre. And since there have been hundreds and hundreds of similar mass shootings in our country. It's one of the largest countries that have gun violence as an epidemic as we do, and it's got to stop. And the way it's going to stop is through people like you and me and Vita getting together and working together. We have done so much to stop the sale of illegal arms all across this country. We have enacted laws. And it is these orange and red shirts all across the country, 6 million supporters, mothers and others, we like to say. And I like to say I'm man enough to be a mom, and I'm so proud to work with these courageous women, many, many of whom have lost their sons and daughters and grandchildren to this gun violence epidemic that apparently is only going to be stopped through voting and legislation. So please do get involved. Check out momsdemandaction.org and join us in this fight. You can, there's lots of ways to get involved, and this Wear Orange Weekend, this weekend, is a great way to get started. I hope you'll join us. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, and thank you for your work on this. Moving ahead, we now have a presentation from the Grants Review Committee, the recommendation on the FY 22 Community Quality of Life Grants. And who is going to lead this discussion? There you are.
Hi. I am just going to start my screen share. This is Jennifer Hale, Grants Coordinator. I will kick it off in a second. Okay. So assuming you can see my screen. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to talk with you about the Community Quality of Life Grant Program. I'll apologize that my video is a little touchy tonight, so I'm actually going to stay off camera in the hopes that I don't get my internet to drop me out of this meeting. So I'm Jen Hale, Grants Coordinator for the City of Tacoma Park. And I administer the city's Community Quality of Life Grant Program under the direction of Grace Wiggins, Housing and Community Development Manager. I am here tonight because the Grants Review Committee has completed its annual review of all eligible FY 22 applications and momentarily will present their recommendations for funding. I'll kick things off with a brief overview of the Quality of Life Grant Program, but first I'd like to spotlight two things. All of the information presented tonight and much, much more can be found in the FY 22 Allocation Summary Report, which is linked in the agenda. Secondly, I'll mention that while we're here tonight to discuss next year's projects, our current grantees are busy finishing up their FY 21 projects. So in September, we'll return again before the council to report the outcomes and metrics of those programs in greater detail. So I always like to say that the Quality of Life Grant Program is not a grant program for nonprofits. It is a grant program for residents. And during our September presentation, we'll be able to report on how hundreds of residents' lives were impacted by Quality of Life programs last year. So what is the Quality of Life Grant Program? It is a city grant that provides up to $10,000 for programs that deliver greater access and opportunities for participation in the arts and sciences for predominantly low and moderate income residents. Since 2014, this program has provided more than $600,000 in funding to more than 70 grant programs serving thousands of residents. For FY 22, the city council has allocated a total of $105,000 to be awarded to eligible projects selected for funding by the Grants Review Committee. Up on the screen are the basic eligibility requirements all applicants must meet to be considered for funding. You can see that projects must either be Arts and Humanities or STEM. Applicant organizations must either be a 501(c)(3) or a 501(c)(6). All project beneficiaries, or project beneficiaries must predominantly be from low to moderate income households, so more than 51%. And 75% must be city residents. And finally, applicants must demonstrate that they can match city funding dollar for dollar. This is a really important aspect of this program that amplifies the value of every dollar of city funding. It is important to remember that the city is never the sole funding source for any Quality of Life grant projects. Through either additional funding sources, donated goods or services, and/or volunteer time, our grantees match city funding at least dollar for dollar. And as you'll see in a moment, often much more. Only through ongoing outreach can we ensure that new programs and partnerships are cultivated. That's why for the past three years, we've prioritized outreach to new applicants. And I'm really pleased to report that this year, new and returning applicants were 35% of our applicant pool. We also had a high retention rate for returning grantees with all but one of our FY 21 grantees applying for additional funding in FY 22. So remember that dollar to dollar match. By looking at the total project budgets across the 12 programs recommended for funding, you can get a clearer picture of the actual value of the Quality of Life Program. In FY 22, the city investment of $105,000 will yield a total program value of more than $380,000, reaching 850 direct beneficiaries, thousands more indirect beneficiaries. Though these programs overwhelmingly serve city residents, the city is not the sole funder of these programs. And this coming year, the city's investment will be matched nearly three to one, meaning that every dollar of city funding will result in $3 worth of programming value for residents. Before I turn it over to the committee members, I'd like to thank the city council for your continued support of this vital program. I'd also like to take, to thank the entire Grants Review Committee pictured here for their expertise and commitment. The residents that serve on the committee are truly outstanding. They read hundreds of pages of applications each year. And they also participate in program audits and site visits, ensuring that funded programs meet the highest standards of quality. They really are the experts next door, and I'm so grateful for their service. It's now my pleasure to turn this presentation over to committee members Kelly Cochran, Ward 6, and Mark Schwartz, Ward 1. Kelly and Mark will take a moment to introduce themselves, and then will explain the review process, some of the funding considerations this year, and will then present the final slate of programs recommended for funding by the Grants Review Committee.
Hello all. Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to speak with us. My name is Kelly Cochran, and I'm one of the newest members of GRC. And I'm also fairly new to Tacoma Park. I moved back toward six back in October of 2020. Currently, I'm a special education advocate for DC Public Schools and Public Charter Schools, but my passion is ending the school-to-prison pipeline and to reduce recidivism. Last month, I'm happy to report that I passed the bar, so I look forward to representing students also into Tacoma Park moving forward. Additionally, I am an education's benefits staff attorney for a nonprofit in DC. In my work, I represent one of the most vulnerable populations, returning citizens, those with disabilities and mental health diagnosis. In my position, I advocate for clients, including access to social security benefits when they have limited access to any other means due to their disabilities. As a new resident, I was looking for a way to connect in Tacoma Park and to learn the needs of the community and how to get involved. A chance meeting with Grace Wiggins during a resident committee meeting at Hampshire Towers led to an opportunity of a lifetime. We chatted about my previous work in nonprofit development and my post-college career in finance, in addition to my current work as a disabilities rights advocate and attorney. Grace encouraged me to apply for a vacancy on GRC, and I was appointed to the committee right before the applicants for FY 2020 funding opened up. It has been a pleasure working with these talented and genuine individuals from different backgrounds, both all ethnic and socioeconomic in age. I believe that the GRC is a true representation of Tacoma Park's community. It has been one of the most collaborative and considerate groups that I've ever been a part of. This year was the, was a very competitive year with great programming and organizations. Each member worked diligently to select the best programming for the needs of our community. This experience has been a delight, and I look forward to continually working on the committee. We truly appreciate the council's support of these Quality of Life Grants, and I look forward to continuing to serve on this committee. Now I'm pleased to introduce my fellow member of GRC, Mark Schwartz.
Hello, I'm Mark Schwartz, and I want to echo Kelly's appreciation for the council.
Hello, I'm Mark Schwartz, and I want to echo Kelly's appreciation for the council for funding the Quality of Life Grants Program. Given the circumstances of 2021, the projects funded through this program feel more critical than ever. As one of the new members of the Grants Review Committee, I'd also like to introduce myself. I've lived in Tacoma Park for 11 years, most of them on Poplar Avenue in Ward 3, but we moved to New York Avenue in Ward 1 this past November. My wife, Jenny Gilfoyle, is an immigration lawyer who helps detainees and asylum seekers. And we have two teenagers, Jasper is a junior at Blair, and Evian is an eighth grader at Tacoma Middle. Throughout my career, I have written for and about nonprofit organizations, mostly lately about early childhood education. Joining the GRC has allowed me to discover innovative local organizations and local affiliates of national organizations that are serving my neighbors and their families. It's also been great to spend time with and learn from my fellow committee members, a collegial and engaged group of Tacoma residents. When I lived in New York, I worked at the Robin Hood Foundation, which funds poverty-fighting nonprofits in the Five Boroughs to the tune of $150 million a year. And when I moved here, I co-founded the Lever Fund, a much smaller enterprise devoted to the National Capital Region. I found and vetted the Lever Fund's first five grantee organizations, adapting Robin Hood's methodology of calculating the benefit-cost ratio of a philanthropic investment. We're bringing some of this metrics-driven approach to the GRC. Next, I'd like to provide a broader overview of our review process. The team from the city's Housing and Community Development Department, Jennifer Hale, Grants Coordinator, and Grace Wiggins, Housing Development Manager, provides the reviewers for the Quality of Life Program with all eligible applications submitted to the program using our online portal. We read all the applications thoroughly and offer qualitative scores based on 11 predetermined questions on a one-to-five-point scale. Jen averages across all applicants and creates ranked lists of proposals based on their combined scores and averaged scores. Following this quantitative review, committee members come together for the qualitative review stage. Using the scores as a starting point, we meet over Zoom, we met over Zoom to discuss the applications. Because committee members bring different experiences and expertise, one reviewer may notice a strength or weakness that may not have been apparent to others in the group. This approach also makes sure the group is on the same page when thinking about priorities. The two-tiered process helps the committee make funding recommendations based on program requirements, council priorities, and our knowledge of the community to meet the needs of the people of our city. The ongoing impact of COVID-19 has been an important consideration during our review and deliberation process this year, specifically public safety and community programs in the age of COVID. All FY21 community grant programs were conducted virtually due to the global pandemic. For the FY22 applications, the GRC requested that all applicants, again, address their ability to continue programming in a virtual environment. We requested this information to ensure the safety of all residents who participate in their programs. If the programs are approved for funding, we're confident they will be capable of delivering programming in a virtual environment and prepared to continue programming online as needed to ensure public safety. Following the review of the COVID-19 information provided by select applicants, the GRC is confident that the programs we selected, one, meet all program requirements; two, thoughtfully address the COVID-19 health crisis and prioritize public health and safety; three, are well-positioned to be successful in a virtual environment as needed; and four, are responsive to the needs of low and moderate-income people of color and provide meaningful opportunities for residents, including access to employment and skill building. Back to you, Kelly.
Just trying to get off mute. Sorry about that, guys. As my colleague has stated, access to employment during COVID has been very challenging for many of our residents. Last year, in acknowledgement to the need for workforce envelopments amongst our residents, the committee encouraged all grant applicants to highlight their proposals of any elements of this program that would also promote workforce development for low-income and moderate-income Tacoma Park residents. While not a requirement for funding, gathering this information allowed the GRC to see the potential impacts of proposed programs in a new light. An additional $25,000 in workforce development funds from the previous fiscal year will also be granted through these programs in FY2022. For a total of $105,000, a workforce fund will be used as originally intended by funding programs that are addressing barriers to securing and sustaining employment by providing financial assistance for a range of workforce development activities, including but not limited to certifications and trainings and employment coaching and counseling. Of the programs recommended for this funding year, four of these programs have prominent workforce development features. Other programs cultivate STEM skills and trainings for youth that leads to better employment and opportunities in the future. Now I will talk about the committee's consideration on race equity in our funding recommendations. The Grant Review Committee has embraced the city's resolution for committing to systematic and deliberately applying a race equity lens in our decision-making. Starting in FY19, each applicant of the Quality of Life Grant Program was provided with Mayor Stewart and Councilmember Garrett Smith's statement on race equity and asked to specifically address race equity in their applications for funding. New in FY22, we built on this previous work by requiring all applicants to address inclusion and representation within their leadership, specifically if it related to the community served by the applicant's organization. During our deliberations, answers to the race equity and representation leadership question, along with the Board of Directors and Leadership makeup, were heavily weighted in the decision-making process. In FY22, as in FY20 and FY21, all decisions made by the Grant Review Committee prioritize race equity. The resulting slate for FY22's grantees' recommendations reflect the council's race equity priorities and the needs of the resident. Therefore, we are confident that by applying the FY22 funding representation, the council will be improving access to science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, also known as STEAM, opportunities to Black, Indigenous, and people of color residents, including immigrants and refugees. The programs recommended for funding are in the following slides in the material provided.
Thank you, Mark and Kelly, for presenting the Grant Review Committee's recommended programs for FY22 funding. As I mentioned earlier, you can find more detailed information about these projects in our written report. And if the council has any questions, Mark, Kelly, and I are happy to answer them now.
Before we begin with questions, first of all, I thank you so much for the presentation and the incredible work that you've put into this project. And I'd just like to remind my colleagues that this is not a work session, so we should limit our questions to the presentation and making sure that we understand the presentation. Thank you. I don't see any hands raised yet. Ms. Councilmember Kostic.
Thank you. I don't have any specific questions, but I just wanted to say a big thank you to the Grants Review Committee and Ms. Hale for your work on all of this. I know it's a lot of work, and I'm excited about the approach that you're taking, and I think it seems like a great number of applicants for the grants. So just want to say a big thank you to all.
Councilmembers, Seracy.
Yes, I want to echo Councilmember McCaustic in my appreciation for the Grants Review Committee and all of the hard work that you all put in. The presentation was excellent and also assured me that you all were looking at the right, prioritizing the right types of work, especially given the pandemic and council priorities. So again, I just want to reiterate my appreciation for all of the hard work that you all have put in and definitely look forward to hearing a little bit more about the actual awards and the types of programs that will come out of these recommendations.
Councilmember DiBala.
Yeah, on what they said. Thank you so much, and I look forward to seeing you in September to hear about this past year's grant awards and how they did. Thanks.
Yes, again, thank you all for the work that you've done and for the presentation tonight. As you heard from the questions, oh, I do see another hand, Mr. Kovar.
Yes, and I just want to say.
I think I messed up here. I messed up. This is rookie work here.
You can be Rookie of the Year. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate that the committee responded directly to some of the things that the council has asked for, because we have pushed for the notion of emphasizing more than in the past. Not that it wasn't discussed in the past, but emphasizing more than perhaps has been in the past in the grant process, components like racial equity and workforce development. And we talked about those things, and the committee has done it, and I really appreciate it. So thank you.
Councilmember DiBala, your hand went up and down and up and down. Did you want to talk? Okay. You're done? All right. So ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the presentation tonight. And as you can see, there weren't a lot of questions, so it was obviously a very clear presentation. Now, we're going to move on now to public comments. I noticed tonight that we did not have anyone signed up for public comments on voting items, so we'll move right to the general comments. I ask, as you give your comments tonight, to remember that we do have a three-minute limit, unless you have asked ahead of time for additional time. It so happens that our first speaker tonight, Stephanie Rudman, did ask for five minutes, and so you have the floor now, Ms. Rudman.
Great, thank you so much. Good evening, and thank you, Councilmember Seracy and the rest of the council. The rest of the council and the staff, I'm for asking MHP to present on one of our current projects, the renovation of Hillwood Manor located at 1100 Linden Avenue in Tacoma Park. My name's Stephanie Rudman. I'm a senior project manager and legal counsel with MHP. And I want to tell you a little bit about MHP for those of you who aren't familiar with us, a little bit about MHP's history with Hillwood Manor, and finally, I'll describe our proposed renovations and a little bit about the proposed tree removal. First, I just want to briefly introduce my colleagues and partners that are here. We have Artie Harris, who is Vice President of Real Estate with MHP and resident of Tacoma Park, Carrie Thomas, our architect, Minor Fine-Ten Architect, and Ken Jones is our civil engineer with the Crease Hendricks of Glassco. So as some of you may know, MHP is the largest nonprofit owner of affordable housing in Montgomery County. We currently own over 2,275 affordable units in Montgomery County, Prince George's County, and DC. We own nine large apartment complexes in Tacoma Park and over 420 units in Tacoma Park. In addition to housing, MHP provides educational support services for resident children from preschool to middle school, high school through our community life programs. So MHP purchased Hillwood Manor in 2016 from a single landlord as part of a three-property acquisition. When we purchased it, the property had over 500 housing code violations, and we quickly brought the property up to code. Since that time, we've been working diligently behind the scenes on assembling the financing to do a badly needed substantial rehab. So you can show the next slide. And the next slide after that. So this is Hillwood Manor. It's a gorgeous site right on Sligo Creek, and some of it's walking trails. So the proposed renovation scope, currently there's no accessible units, and non-accessible management office will be renovated, creating four fully ADA-accessible units, two for the visual and hearing impaired, and a fully accessible management office and community room. We're going to provide programming and services to the tenants and the community room based on the needs of the residents. You can show the next slide, which is a rendering of our proposed community room. It is ooh and ah. In addition, we're going to have two outdoor plazas for the tenants. You can show the next slide. One outside the management office, and this is the central colonnade. You can show the next slide as well. This is a night, combined night, and one more slide. This is, the next slide, is in front of the leasing office. So we're also utilizing some of the unused basement areas to add eight new bedrooms to the existing units. We're excited about two new three-bedroom, two-bath units and one four-bedroom, two-bath unit that we're going to add to the Tacoma Park housing stock. So the renovation is very extensive. Every system needs to be replaced, including roofs, windows, electrical, and plumbing. All these systems are at the end of their useful life, and nearly every water and waste pipe needs to be replaced, creating a tremendous amount of site work. In addition, we're going to be replacing all the kitchens and baths in the individual HVAC systems. So now Ken Jones will present on the true removal and talk about what we are requesting in our tree hearing, which is actually tomorrow at 6:00 PM. Ken?
Yes, thank you, Stephanie. This is Ken Jones with MHP, a civil engineer for the project. If you could go ahead and advance the next slide, please. So there are a significant number of trees on site. There are 173 trees quantified on the tree protection plan, which are seven and five-eighths inches in diameter or greater that are near the proposed limits of disturbance. And while we're making efforts to retain many trees on site, it would be impossible, given the scope of site improvements, to avoid impacting existing tree root zones. In many cases, it's unrealistic to expect these trees to survive after these impacts. In total, there are 60 trees which we are requesting to remove, which is for the good of the property and of the tenants. Of these seven that are being removed, due to their proximity to proposed stormwater management facilities, 20 are being removed because they're close to a new sewer line. Eight are being removed for ADA improvements, seven because of a water line, six because of potential solar, five because of electric conduit, six due to proximity to the existing buildings, three for courtyard improvements, and one for a new dumpster. And while these trees will be removed, many existing trees will be retained. There is a forest in the rear of our property, which is but Sligo Creek, that will be placed into a protected forest conservation easement. In addition, we will be replacing 11 trees on site in accordance with county forest conservation requirements. And so if you're looking at the exhibit that's being shown, the darker green areas are those areas which are post-development. We retain existing tree cover, and the lighter circles of green are the 11 trees that I mentioned that are going to be planted as part of the project as well. So the forest conservation plan is currently under review by the county. We have prepared a tree protection plan, which shows every tree near the proposed disturbance that is seven and five-eighths inches in diameter. It identifies the species and size of the trees and whether they will be removed. The plan will be submitted to the city arborist and can be reviewed by anyone following a community meeting, which is required by city code. The community meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, June 3, at 6:00 PM via GoToMeeting.
Great, thank you, Ken. And with our remaining three and a half seconds, we'd be happy to take any questions. And we also would take any questions by email, or you can always call us, you know, or find us out later.
Thank you. I say good evening to Artie Harris, too. I see him here tonight with MHP. Good to see you, Artie.
Yeah, thank you, Derek. Good to see all of you, too.
All right, did we have any questions from the council? Again, I'm not seeing any hands at this time. I thank you so much for coming and giving your presentation. Okay, moving on with the community comments, Rick Wise.
Thank you for this opportunity to share with a different developer, the Neighborhood Development Company and the council, a few excerpts from some research I've been doing on how to win no matter what. Rule one, say you'll do one thing, then break your promise and do something else. Say, for example, you want to build something that's going to take away parking spaces that are important to surrounding small minority-owned businesses. The first thing you should do is promise you'll include plenty of extra parking spaces as part of your project. That's easy, but some developers make a terrible mistake after this, and they actually provide the promised parking. This reduces profits and makes you look foolish at developer parties. So be sure to get not just one, but two waivers. The first one is to reneg on your promise to provide that extra parking for the neighboring businesses you're harming. And the second one is to go even lower than that and not even provide the parking that your own building is required by code to provide. This rule, sometimes known as lying for short, is so powerful, you should use it repeatedly. Some opinions, some options we recommend include a promise to provide space for people to gather and then don't, or promise not to cut down too many trees and then do. Rule two, make tiny changes that don't fix anything. Let's say, for example, you want to build something big in a small space, but then there's no place for trucks to pull around the back to deliver supplies and collect stinky garbage. So instead, you make a place to do that right out in front, so you can. you make a place to do that right out in front, so you can roll that garbage across the sidewalk, and you have big hand trucks rolling up the wheelchair and stroller ramp, and you can block other drivers' views on a busy state road, and the state highway administration might say three times that this doesn't work, but don't give up. Just remember rule two, small meaningless changes for the win. Finally, rule three, and this is really for the local officials, who can't face the fact that they've been rolled by scoundrels who have been following the first two rules from the start. Rule three is, when the going gets tough, go silent and refuse to engage with the people you represent. Naysayers may come to meetings like these and say things that by any normal measure of democracy deserve actual two-way public discussion, but take my advice. Whatever you do, don't respond. Sit silently like cardboard cutouts. Do not answer a single question or give a clue about what's going on. And for God's sake, do not admit that despite your best efforts, this junction plan has gone south and needs to be rethought from scratch. Remember, the goal is not to have an honest point-by-point consideration together. The goal is to win no matter what. So, be sure to follow these proven rules. Just say thank you and move on.
Well, I will say thank you, Mr. Wise. And Tom Gagliardo is up next.
Mr. Gagliardo, I've had a hard time bringing you into the meeting, but I think you should be able to speak if you. I'm asking you to unmute. See if that works. Perhaps we could move on to the next person and come back to Mr. Gagliardo.
Okay, it's Mary Machui here.
And Ms. Machui is not with us either.
Okay, move on then to Bob Dreher.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me offer a comment. I'm Bob Dreher, and I live at 7122 Sycamore Avenue in Ward Three. I wanted to comment and ask a couple of questions about the current situation involving the Tacoma Junction project. I've watched his dismay, and I've commented before to the city council as this project has moved forward, because it just seems far too large for this location, and it ignores, frankly, the needs and values our community has identified, including public space. I've also been saddened by the way this project has divided our community. No other issue has so bitterly divided Tacoma Park in the 35 years I've lived here. The city has an enormous range of issues it should be engaging on, and we need to work together to engage on them, but this project seems to be locked in a lose-lose situation. I think that's a shame. But I've taken comfort from the city's clear commitment to supporting the co-op, which is the heart of the junction and deeply valued by our community. The city has said from the beginning that it would ensure that this project would would not undermine the continued viability of the co-op and included requirements in the development agreement and parking lot lease with NDC, that the developer provide continued access to the co-op for deliveries and parking. All of that now seems to have gone by the board. NDC is openly attacking the co-op's economic lifeline by trying to block its access to the parking lot, apparently trying to drive it out of business. The city seems to be standing by in silence or even encouraging the developer by making false accusations regarding the co-op's delivery operations, and the co-op has had to go to court to protect its existence. We should never have gotten to this point. In retrospect, I think it should have been clear that the lay-by idea was infeasible for an intersection as complex and as overloaded as the junction. The city should not have allowed the developer to spend years developing a plan that relied totally on this flawed concept to meet its obligations to provide access to the co-op. If the city had insisted that the project be designed to provide adequate access from the beginning, we wouldn't be here now. I understand that now the NDC has submitted a new lay-by plan to the state highway administration that would preclude deliveries by large trucks. The co-op depends on those deliveries. So, my questions are, did NDC share this plan with the city? If not, they really are out of control, and the city urgently needs to end its relationship with them. If they did share this scheme with the city, did the city tell them to go ahead despite the obvious impacts of the co-op? If the city government, if so, the city government's walking away from its core commitment to the community to sustain the co-op, or are we just standing silent? The city needs to take charge of this spiraling situation. It should tell NDC to withdraw this lay-by plan and direct it to develop a new project design. I doubt that NDC is able to do that at this point, and I'm not sure that the city should continue to work with a developer that has repudiated its obligations to the community, but I hope we can come up with a solution that we can all support. Thank you.
Yes, and thank you for for your opinions, and I encourage you to talk with your council member to regarding your questions.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Gagliardo, are you online now?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you. Thank you.
Lot of technical difficulties. I thought I was going to speak tonight to remind you that I still haven't gotten an answer to the questions I've asked at the past two meetings, but I'm not going to do that tonight. Instead, I'm just going to wish Susie Wallow good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, I have Sue Miller.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Tonight, I have a series of questions on the junction process. I realize you have been tied up with the budget and other essential matters, but I would remind council of your city policy of answering questions raised in public comments. First, with the retirement of the city manager, I ask if the council can now reassert responsibility for deciding what the city wants at the junction and how best to get there without a dangerous lay-by. In the future, anyone representing the city needs to be an advocate for the city and not for the developer. It has become more evident each week that those two roles are not compatible, so please let us know whether the council will be leading this process going forward. Second, where are the summaries of closed meetings being posted? These summaries are required by law after every closed meeting, and they were formally requested by me two weeks ago. I also would like to repeat questions that have been asked in recent weeks by others and have not yet been answered. What aspects of the junction plan can you address despite the litigation over NDC's attempt to break their agreements and terminate the co-op's sublease? What exactly are lawyers telling you that you can and cannot talk about? Have you been told the litigation is a reason to conduct all junction business in total darkness for the year it could take to litigate this matter? Because that's the perception of what has been happening for the past two months, total darkness. Have you attempted to negotiate for a specific number of parking spaces in the proposed garage for the general support, general public to support longtime local businesses? Stephen Kern came on to ask this question twice now. Or does NDC still have the contractual right to all but one spaces for prospective new tenants? This has nothing to do with the litigation. I think we need an answer on this. And finally, and this is not a rhetorical question, why are we not walking away from this development deal, a deal with effectively zero public space that threatens local businesses with zero parking with the developer who has now repeatedly threatened the co-op? You have said on multiple occasions that we can walk away at any time. That time is clearly now. The question is, why are we not walking away? I look forward to answers to these questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And Colleen Cordis?
Colleen Cordis, Ward One, speaking for Community Vision for Tacoma. The full county council at any time now could take up CTA 1907, the radical zoning proposal to routinely allow cell towers on poles 30 feet from every home with no public notice or hearing, or even closer with a special permit. So, time is of the essence if the city council wants to pass a resolution clarifying the city's opposition. As you may recall, such a resolution from Tacoma Park would then require a supermajority vote by the county council, six of its nine members, for this zoning proposal to take effect. County Councilmember Hans Reimer introduced it in 2019 without consulting first with Tacoma Park. It was resident, unfriendly, and a threat to our own ordinance for regulating cell towers and rights of way. However, it was drastically revised and made much worse when Mr. Reimer's committee voted on it in March. It allows utility and streetlight poles, as well as parking lot poles in any residential zone to be turned into cell towers. Committee members shrank the distance for routinely placing cell towers near homes from 60 feet to 30 feet. For special permits, they deleted any absolute minimum from homes at all. There's no limit to how close together these cell towers could be. There's also no real height limit. Over time, carriers can keep adding antennas on top of one another. They can also stack big equipment boxes on the poles or on the ground, creating line-of-sight hazards for drivers and pedestrians, a special issue for children. These radical zoning changes will broadly affect our city. They will impact all homes in residential zones, including both single-family and multifamily dwellings. In fact, most apartment buildings and condos in Tacoma Park are included because most multi-unit residences in Tacoma Park are in residential zones. The proposal also reaffirms that horrific 2019 addition to existing zoning law, allowing cell towers on poles to be as close as 10 feet from residential buildings and area zones commercial residential. That affects all the other multifamily dwellings in our city. Mr. Reimer's committee has not proposed eliminating that harmful loophole. Fixing it and fixing the county's broken process for reviewing and inspecting cell towers should be the real priorities for counting cell tower action. We urge you to prepare a resolution opposing ZTA 1907 as quickly as possible. We can provide more information if that would be helpful to city staff for crafting language for such a resolution. DTA 1907 is especially ill time now. The court will rule soon, likely in your favor, in the case challenging current FCC rules for which Mayor Stewart and most of our council signed on to the NRC Amicus brief. We thank you for doing that, and thank you for your time tonight. Please do pass it to resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cordis, and thank you for your ongoing advocacy. I don't see Ms. Machui.
I think Ms. Machui is with us now.
Oh, good.
Here she is.
Hello. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm getting, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little upset about these people, about the Tacoma Junction. I would wish one of them would come and help my son. All you care about is, you don't care, but you care about ideas, but you don't care about human beings. My son applied for a job there, a low-paying job there. He didn't even acknowledge the receipt of his application. I mean, it's convenient. You sell food there, but you're getting more and more uppity and gentrified.
It would probably help if you turned your sound down, so you didn't hear yourself.
Gentrified. And I'm, we're in really in bad shape. My son's unemployment, everybody else in the state is ending July 2nd. We're low income homeowners. Somebody, people don't seem to care about us. We're the ones leaving Tacoma Park, but you don't care. You'd rather see the developers to come in and. Well, I'm sorry, I don't have enough money to contribute your campaigns, but I have voted every year for some of you all. I'm sorry, Habitat for Humanity has, since August of 2018, said they're going to try to help fix, renovate my house. Four times, they came to my house, four times, and now they said they're not doing anything. But now you're helping people who make minimum $52,000 buy houses on Garland Avenue, and they're hiring Habitat to completely renovate the houses, but they couldn't renovate my basement. And I couldn't afford $52,000. Who are you trying to help? You're just trying to help rich people. Thank you. Bye.
All right. Sad note to end our community comments on. Oh, next, we have council comments. And I'm watching for hands here. Who wants to be first tonight? Well, the mayor's missing an evening with no council comments. Mr. Kovar, here we go. Mr. Kovar, you're first. You want to unmute yourself?
Okay, I was trying to get my. Sorry about that. I apologize. Thank you, Councilmember Siemens, for filling in, first of all, doing a fine job, so I appreciate that. I appreciate the comments from the, from the residents who spoke this evening, and I think there's a number of important points that have been raised, and I do hope that we'll be able before too much longer to be able to comment more publicly about what's happening with Tacoma Junction. I, I think, given the nature of the current situation and the fact that we're in litigation, it is challenging, and I'm reluctant to, at this point, say a lot, but that isn't something that will last forever. And I hope to be able to change that soon, so I'll just say that. Secondly, on Ms. Cordis's comments about cell towers, I do agree that it would be important for us to go on the record against the proposed zoning change in the county that could end up placing cell towers much more close, much more, much closer than they currently are allowed here in Tacoma Park to people's residences and so on. I will talk to my colleagues separately about how best to do that. A couple of other things I wanted to mention. There was a really enjoyable event over the weekend, and the All Tacoma Business Association was involved in planning it and arranging it, and that was a presentation by the Washington National Opera and their so-called Opera Truck, which involved a group of their younger singers. I'll use that term for want of a better term, and maybe a better one for people with opera training, but they, on Saturday, had a really enjoyable presentation of an hour plus, and it wasn't just operatic music, but other kinds of more popular and Broadway tunes as well. And the theme, maybe it's relevant for all of us who are serving on the council, was it's complicated, but it was really great. I'm really glad they got to do it. So, and I was able to watch it, and I hope there might be other opportunities in the future for that. And I would just, one other point, I would just like to ask the staff to, on the Hillwood Manor project, there was a lot of talk about the trees, and since our tree ordinance now does include a requirement when there's more than 10 trees that are being proposed to be removed, that there be a community meeting and enhanced public communication. And this project is in Ward One, and so I certainly wouldn't have been notified about it, but I would just like to confirm that people feel that the public notice aspect of that seems to be working well, since that was something that we spent a lot of time on when we did the, when we engaged in the tree ordinance adjustments that we made last summer that this flows from. So, I appreciate that reference is made to the importance of there being a public meeting. I just want to make sure that people are comfortable with how that's going, and I believe that is all I have. So, thank you again.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Cersei?
Great. I want to thank everyone for their comments tonight. I especially want to thank. thank MHP for doing what I would like to call the fastest presentation on a development project I've seen while on council. So I appreciate, you know, that partnership because it is going to be critically important that we continue to work together as we move forward with the development at the Hillwood Manor Apartments. So we're excited to, and I know the residents are excited to see that renovation go forward. Also want to congratulate MHP on their state grant, also in support of the Hillwood Manor Apartments renovation. So there's a lot of good things that are happening at that site. And again, definitely appreciate the partnership. Councilmember Kovar, in response to your question, yes, so we'll, we'll find out tomorrow. The first community meeting is scheduled for tomorrow. We'll say, you know, there's been for this particular project, MHP and I've had conversations with the mayor, we are working to bring them back in in July to provide you all with a little bit more of an in-depth presentation on this particular project where you'll have a little bit more of an opportunity to ask questions. But they are working with a tenant engagement group to kind of help with various aspects of the project. So I do know that the notifications about this community meeting, I believe were, were shared and we all received the notifications as well, at least I did. So again, we'll see tomorrow in terms of attendance and comments and questions that people may have.
To be honest, I had no reason to be concerned. I just.
No, it'll be interesting. I definitely want to encourage you to to call in if you can, because I believe that, that meeting was shared. Because it will be interesting to see how that, how that pans out. You know, sometimes when we're developing policies, we create them and we think it, you know, we think it'll go one way and then in practice it may be something different. So this will be our, I believe it may be our first test run at this. So definitely for folks that work on the revisions to the tree ordinance, you're welcome to attend. A couple of other updates. The Tacoma Langley Crossroads Summer Mercado, Mercado is on Saturday, June the twenty-sixth from twelve until five on Anne Street. So I definitely want to encourage people to come out. It should be live music, crafts, international food. It'll be a good time. So definitely want to encourage people to come out on Saturday. The New Hampshire Gardens Community Association is having a meeting on Friday at Becca Lily Park at six PM. So I believe they are encouraging people to bring a chair and encourage people to come out and talk about issues that are impacting the New Hampshire Gardens community. I had had an opportunity to take a quick look at the results from the Hillwood Manor Playground survey, and there was almost a tie between options one and option two. They were separated by one vote. So because they were so close, I have reached out to county staff to, to make sure that we know what next steps should be because the votes were very, very close. In some of the comments, I realized that if the kids picked, they picked a particular option. If they were old enough to say which one they wanted, they picked a particular option. And so I recruited my nephews in my selection, and I could confirm that if you ask an eight-year-old boy between option one, option two, which one he would like, he's going to pick option two. So there's going to be perhaps some more meetings to just finalize which option that we may go with in terms of the Hillwood Manor Playground. And last but not least, I want to thank Jean and Grace and Doris Durante today for our meeting with Orla over at Hampshire Towers. Just as a quick heads up, there will be an upcoming elevator outage. And it will happen on June the seventeenth overnight. So definitely appreciate Grace and the Orla management team, and I'm sure there'll be some follow-up. City manager with you and everyone else that we need to make sure we notify to make sure that folks are prepared for that elevator outage. And I think that is all I have.
Fantastic. Thank you. And I don't see any other council members' hands, so let's go on to the city manager comments.
Thank you very much. That came faster than I thought, so let me get my comments. I did want to just note back on the MHP brief presentation and the tree item that when, as we go through this process, it is helpful to actually have an overview of the process before you have a tree discussion. And so that was useful, I think, for MHP to at least give you all an understanding of why there's a request for this tree meeting as opposed to just show up at a tree meeting. So thinking about how do we say what the overall project is first, you know, might be part of the tweaking as things go on about how we, how we review the, the tree requests. So from my, I have a number of important city manager comments this evening. First, it hasn't been mentioned, but I'd like to, not much, to welcome the new city manager, Hiree. He'll, Jamal Fox will report to work on August second. We've already been having lots of transition discussions and I'm hoping that everybody in Tacoma Park welcomes him and shows him what Tacoma Park's made of. So he can jump right in. Have a lot of COVID nineteen related information to share. The COVID nineteen testing that has been done at the Tacoma Park Rec Center every Saturday, this Saturday's the last one. So just if you need testing, there are other options for testing and look on Montgomery County website. But Saturday is the last time that COVID nineteen testing will take place at the rec center. However, we're doing vaccinations left and right. And the county will be doing vaccinations at the Sligo Seventh Day Adventist Church at Carol and Flower. They've been doing it some this week. They will do it Thursday and Friday this week from nine AM to four PM, and then next week, Monday through Friday, from noon to seven PM. This is walk-up, no appointment needed. It's free. It's a Pfizer vaccine, so if you have a child twelve or older, this is the time to just walk up and get those vaccines, and please do so. There's also, for the folks who already had their first vaccine on May sixteenth, the follow-up is this Sunday at the Tacoma Park Community Center. And that one had been hosted by Small Things Matter and Continuum Healthcare. So really happy that these things are happening. Please encourage anyone who's not yet been vaccinated to do so. We do keep our COVID nineteen dashboard up to date on the website. While great progress is being made on getting people vaccinated, on having the cases go down, we did have another death in two oh nine one two zip code this past week. It, this continues to be a serious disease. Please, please take the safety precautions that you need, and we have great sympathy for all who have been affected by COVID nineteen. However, since things are getting better, the CDC has changed a number of its guidelines. The state of Maryland and Montgomery County have made adjustments due to the large number of vaccinated residents. City of Tacoma Park's going to start opening up our facilities to the public, and we're doing it in a very careful way. We are doing it with the guidance that has been given by the federal government, the state of Maryland and Montgomery County. We're also monitoring it carefully, so we're not just jumping in both feet first. The, and I'll go through some of the highlights in a minute. But because children under the age of twelve cannot get vaccinated, we are being particularly careful where children are concerned, and we understand families that have concerns about how the precautions are changing. We've got children in our before and after-school programs and then in summer camp. And so we've structured our opening around the children and those children's programs. So what we are planning on doing is that, beginning June fourteenth, individuals are, will be able to get on in-person services by appointment at the community center, or they can go into the public works lobby for assistance for public works activities. And so that will be an opportunity to actually meet with staff in person. All of our city lobbies and, and public areas where the public goes in or the children are in, will have mask requirements. Starting July sixth, most of the city staff will be, who've been working remotely, will be back on site. And so that's something that, you know, we're getting ready for and, and that will be part of how we serve the public. The library will open for services in person on July sixth. And so this is really exciting because construction won't start until late fall. We want to take advantage of the library that we have and allow for in-person services beginning July sixth. On Monday, August twenty-third, all city facilities will fully reopen to the general public because the summer camps will be done. And so then we'll just be back to as best of normal as there can be. In terms, again, related to masks, in the areas where children under twelve are attending programs, masks must be worn by all occupants, and there's state legislative, state requirements that, for example, our recreation staff, when they're doing programs with children outside, also must wear masks. So you're following those state regulations. I do want to alert people that our staff do not have to wear masks when they're on city business outside. And so there are a few times when they do. They certainly can be asked, will put on a mask there to continue to have them at hand. But following the CDC guidance, they do not necessarily have to be wearing a mask when they're on duty but outside. And so if you see an officer or a public works staff person not wearing a mask, it's okay. And so they just want to give that heads up because it's a change in our policy. If we're ever entering somebody's home, we'll wear masks. If we're in certain programs with children, we'll have masks or other kind of constrained area where somebody would like us to wear a mask, we will respect people's wishes. Beginning August twenty-third, masks will be optional in city facilities. The, the summer programs will be done. And obviously, we're going to be monitoring what the state guidance is, what the school district guidance is, a variety of different things as the summer proceeds. And we always reserve the right to change this, if something seems to need that. So I just want folks to know that we're watching it carefully. A lot of our recommendations on processes come from Ron Hardy, our emergency manager, and I really appreciate the careful attention that's been given to, to these changes. It's exciting, trying to get people back in and around and, and see the public is something that we're looking forward to. On this council agenda this evening and next week, there are a number of other changes that happened because we're seeing the pandemic in this region come to an end. One of the things that does not require council action but is consistent with these changes is to removing the suspension of time limits for the Public Information Act requests. So we've complied with them in almost every case anyway, but we are now, I'm sus- I'm suspending the suspension. I'm ending the suspension. The notice will be officially effective June seventh, so Monday. It's being posted on the website with the Public Information Act request information. I didn't want to follow up. It's not in my city manager comments, but we also, it was a question about where the closed meeting criteria are being posted there, to be posted on the agenda page for the council as well as on the minutes page, and I believe that has been done now by our city clerk. So that's the information on COVID nineteen items. I've got some other information briefly. Just to summary, the tax duplication update is that this county budget was completely passed. We're still waiting to see if the extra five million dollars, if and when that comes to the municipalities in Montgomery County. I think it will. It is on a list to, as greater revenue comes to the county to be put into that fund and dispersed. Assuming that those, the total amount of those additional funds do come through, the city of Tacoma Park would receive approximately four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars more for FY twenty-two than was in the original proposed budget by the county executive. More important than this money this year is the changes in the system and the opportunities to really get the right formula for the, particularly the police rebate, which is a large amount of money for the city of Tacoma Park. And that's being worked on. I've been working on that.
Would you, would you mind clarifying, Ms. Lovell, just one point on that? So I'm not really familiar with what it means to say that it's in the budget, but it's contingent upon, I guess, funds becoming available. Is that a?
Yeah, so this is a new thing, right? This is a new thing for this, for the county this year. The county council had a budget that where it knew what the revenues were going to be, and it identified and, and that was adopted. And then they had a category two list of if more revenue funds become available, what would be applied with those new revenue funds? And five million dollars for municipalities tax duplication is prioritized on that list. Usually there is more revenue that comes in, so it's likely that it would go there. There has been certainly a strong commitment expressed by county council members to see that happen, but it's not been finalized yet.
Okay, but in other words, there could be other items on that list also.
There are other items on that list.
Not necessarily first in line, right? If, if more money.
That's correct. So we continue to, to lobby, but as I said, the county council members have been certainly bragging about it in their end of the budget information that they've been sharing.
But, but given that situation, then it sounds like it's still beneficial for residents who may be inclined to continue to contact council members, county council members, and urge them to make sure that it actually happens now that it's, it's in, in theory possible. Is that a fair way to describe it?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember DeBala?
Yes, a follow-up to that. Is there an expectation that this year, in particular, the county council will have additional funds at some point? Otherwise, it sounds like, well, yeah, if we get more money.
They almost always have more funds.
Okay.
This is a very strange year because they certainly have more ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act funds. And there's other information, you know, there's other funding that may come through the infrastructure actions and, and things in the federal government. I just don't know the, the exact likelihood, but I think that the county usually gets more money, and they usually get more money from tax money than they have anticipated. Speaking of more money, we are getting grant money, and we did put out some notice about this, but I wanted to particularly give a shout out to our housing and community development staff. They have been working so hard for the last few years, building partnerships and making connections with state staff, building on the council's Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan being adopted. It resulted in quite a lot of money coming towards Tacoma Park and the opportunity for us to build on that. I think one of the most exciting grants is five hundred thousand dollars to the city for, to help in acquiring properties, to develop affordable homeownership opportunities and preserve a continuum of housing affordability in the city. This is a tremendous opportunity for the city to get that kind of money for something that still is to be determined where it goes and to work with council. Another five hundred thousand dollars comes through the city of Tacoma Park to a private developer for a project on New Hampshire Avenue, and I, I still need to get some more information. I know Councilmember Kastick to you for years, sharing with your constituents. This particular project is pretty derelict, vacant, three-story building on New Hampshire. pretty derelict vacant three-story building on New Hampshire that would be renovated into a state-of-the-art conference center and a commercial building, plus have new housing attached to it or into the in the complex. The developer will have to go through the development review process, just as any other would do. The housing units, if there are to be rental units, would fall under rent stabilization. If there are four purchase units, it would go through the county's laws regarding how what percentage are to be affordable units. A number of people have wondered about this, and I just wanted to let you know that we've had a number of these projects that come. Some money comes through the city to support them and some are nonprofits and some are private developers. Some of the projects that have gone through this process into Tacoma Park, including a two are include a two-bedroom, not two-bedroom, a two-story commercial building near Flower and Piney Branch in Ward Five. There's there's been improvements to Parkview Towers and Historic Tacoma and the Tacoma Park Cooperative Nursery School. And then there's also the money for the facade grants in Tacoma Langley are essentially funneling through the city. We have, one of the things that I think people don't quite realize is we always have developers coming to us with ideas about, oh, we'd like to try something, we'd like to do this. And so there's always those kinds of discussions going on. It takes a while for something to see if it would fit into the general goals of the city and the zoning and the areas and that kind of thing and to pursue. So one of the things that just happens is that we talk with lots of people and then sometimes something really does seem feasible to the state that that they go ahead and approve some funds for them. In the project on New Hampshire Avenue, we're talking at least a ten million dollar project. So the the five hundred thousand dollars from the state of Maryland through us is kind of leverage for that, but it's not the major source of funding. In addition to those large grants, a hundred thousand dollars was allocated to Habitat for Humanity for assistance on the Gottland Avenue Project and as councilmember seriously mentioned, the four hundred thousand to Montgomery Housing Partnership for the Hillwood Manor Project. One project, one grant that I haven't, as I get to finally say out loud, is we also got from Montgomery County forty-five thousand, four hundred and ten dollars today for more durable good furniture for the streeterries that we're have in Tacoma Park. And so this is one that Samira Cook Gaines has been having a lot of discussion with and very happy that that's been now approved. So appreciate all their work to to advance the goals of the council. Two more quick items. This Saturday is household hazardous waste drop-off from ten AM to two PM. It's a drive-through the public works facility. For residents, it's free. For others, it's ten dollars that has to be paid by check. You must put your hazardous waste in the back of your vehicle in your trunk or the back of a pickup truck because our staff don't want to have any interaction. We just take it out of the trunk and we dispose of it. And you continue to drive through. We've done this before. It worked really well, so I'm glad to offer that service this Saturday. And just to note, I will be away on Friday through Monday this weekend as I go out to a family visit in California. There any other questions? So I do want to go back to the to the phasing in of of city. I'm one moment, I councilmember Kostic. The phasing in of the reopening and the masks and that kind of information is posted on the city's website. We've been updating the COVID nineteen pages. So for those who want more details, we've got quite a bit there and we'll continue to be refining it. Yes, councilmember?
Thank you. Yeah, that's actually what I wanted to comment on. I just wanted to say a big thank you for really thinking thoughtfully about the children and the families with children involved. I I know I had raised some concerns with you and some frustration frankly, that I I feel like a lot of the opening that I've seen has not really taken children into consideration and families with children and many times adults who might have been vaccinated but are have immune challenges that might, you know, mean that their vaccines may or may not work as effectively. And so just really appreciate that this was such a thoughtful approach with regard to the children. It's one of the first times I've really heard that much emphasis on children. So thank you.
Yes, and thank you Ms. Ludlow for the comprehensive report tonight.
I know it's a little long.
Yeah, I did want to mention the the hazardous materials collection that many residents may not realize that lithium batteries are part of what should be recycled in this way rather than thrown in the trash. And so all those little button batteries that we also commonly use now or some of the other lithium rechargeable batteries should be turned into the hazardous waste. All right, moving on, we have a voting session tonight, just a single one. It's a single reading ordinance approving the purchase of police mobile and field radios. Ms. Ludlow, did you want to present that?
So we spoke about it last week. There's been no changes. This was, these are purchases that were identified in the budget and are part of the normal updating of our equipment for both cars and and police officers. So I don't think there's anything special unless someone has a question.
Any questions? If not, do we have to call a roll on this, Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, we'll want a motion to adopt the ordinance in the second and then I can call the vote.
All right. Wait here, a motion? Ms. DiBala, another second. I'm not hearing you yet, Ms. Councilmember Kostic. All right, so we now have the motion second. Would you please call the roll?
All right, councilmember Kovar.
Hi.
Councilmember DiBala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Cersei.
Hi.
Mayor Stewart.
All right, the ayes have it. We'll move on to our work session. We have several topics tonight. First is the discussion of the rea- reauthorization of the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority.
And we'll turn it over to Kaylee Gannoud and to Samira Cook Gaines. Haley.
Hi, everyone. Can can you hear me? Wonderful. Good evening. I do have a presentation also. Let me see here. And share that. Okay. Okay, can is this visible for everybody? Okay, perfect. Well, good evening, council. Kaylee Gannoud, Executive Director of the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority. I'm here to talk to you tonight about the reauthorization of the Commercial District Management Authority. That was last, that is something that is codified in Tacoma Park City Code. It was last before the council and reauthorized seven years ago. And as of June thirtieth, it's set to, you know, expire or be renewed by this council. So I have a brief presentation. First off, just a quick review, what is the Commercial District Management Authority? Because I'm not always, it's a, you know, kind of a bit of a word soup there. The Commercial District Management Authority is an economic development strategy that was adopted by the city of Tacoma Park to bring additional resources into the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Commercial District by assessing a license fee on all businesses and property owners within the geographic boundaries of the crossroads. And additionally, what is the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority? The TLCDA is actually an independent five oh one C six nonprofit business association designated by the city of Tacoma Park to manage the CDMA. Our focus areas include marketing, promotion of the area, maintenance of the area and promoting the security of the commercial district. And we are funded by the CDMA license fees along with the service contract with the city of Tacoma Park. So tonight, we are obviously requesting the reauthorization of the CDMA along with a series of proposed adjustments to the license fee structure for the CDMA. And a little background that went into our proposed license fee adjustments. This really was a a true partnership between the CDA and the city's Economic Development Department. We we spent a lot of of time on doing a really looking closely at the cost of doing business on the local and the regional scale. Some of the basically looking at other areas and what businesses are charged as far as license fees go to do business in that area. Some of the things we looked at include local business associations like our own Main Street Tacoma, business license fees of neighboring municipalities, DC Business Improvement District fees, the Silver Spring Urban District and the license fees of the couple of other CDMA's that still exist in in the state of Maryland. So why did we, why did we pick this up right now? Really to in an effort to ensure that the crossroads is competitive and an attractive destination for businesses and property owners now and in the future. And additionally, as we recover from the COVID nineteen crisis, we want to ensure that license fees are set at a level that is sustainable for current businesses. And I will add to that as we look at the future purple line, we want to make sure that license fees are set at a sustainable level for current and future businesses and property owners. So to reiterate both those points, I want to look at some of the impacts of COVID nineteen on the crossroads specifically. Here is our list of our unfortunate list of businesses that have closed in the Tacoma Langley Crossroads over the course of the last fiscal year. Alternatively, we have good news where we were able to introduce a number of new faces into the crossroads, including Brazilian Bakery, World Fashion, Help for Your Business, Soon to Come to Hampshire Langley Plaza, Kobe Japan, and Mom and Pop Smoke and Babe Shop. So those those two slides, I think, in kind of highlight both points of why we were doing this research. One, we want to make sure that we can attract businesses to fill those vacancies in the crossroads. And two, we want to make sure that we can, that the license fees are sustainable for these new faces that, you know, we we welcomed into the into the crossroads this year. So the so there are a couple of proposed adjustments to the license fee structure. And I'm going to start at the left here. One is placing a cap on the license fee for retail and professional professional service providers. And that cap is proposed at four thousand dollars. And I will reiterate that these numbers that we landed on are based on that review process that we conducted earlier. Secondly, we request a reclassification of personal beauty care providers, your hair salons, barber shops, nail salons, braiding and eyebrow technicians from the retail assessment category, which is our highest category at fifty cents per square foot, to the professional service providers category at twenty-five cents per square foot. And the reason for this, there are, there are a number of beauty per- personal care providers in the crossroads. It is a very prominent pathway to work for many small businesses and many entrepreneurs, especially in our community in the crossroads. And this is the group that has been actively vocalizing the the challenges they have sustaining the retail license fee rate as personal care providers. So with that in mind, and this is something that's been going on for a while, we propose moving them to the professional service provider rate to really support that that group of businesses in the crossroads and in our community. Three, there is a proposed adjustment of the retail assessment rate from fifty cents per square foot to forty-two cents per square foot. And lastly, there's a proposed adjustment of the property owner assessment from thirteen cents per square foot to ten cents per square foot. And I just want to highlight that part of what we looked at in evaluating the property owner assessment was the actual cost to property owners in downtown Silver Spring in the Silver Spring Urban District. As as you probably know, properties in downtown Silver Spring pay an additional urban district tax tax assessment. So that that was one of the items that was evaluated in. And we found that there we were actually a little bit higher than that assessment rate. So that was one of the items that was evaluated and considered in that in that change. Lastly, we are proposing that instead of doing this again in seven years, we we put an expiration date of six thirty twenty-six on this. That would be a five-year expiration date. And that is intentionally for the reason that, you know, with proposed changes to the crossroads, we want to be able to look at this again in five years and do the same same review process and make sure we are still at the at a sustainable rate and at a competitive rate and able to adequately promote the the crossroads and sustain the crossroads. So obviously, these changes to the CDMA license fee impact the revenue that will be coming into the CDA. The impact that these changes would have on our CDA FY twenty-two budget, we we have an estimated total income of two hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-five in our FY twenty-two budget. With these changes, that's a revenue loss of seventy-nine thousand, seven two eight in license fee income. However, there are a couple of other supporting factors that can help us absorb that loss of revenue. One is that we do have a reserve fund of a that will be at a hundred and eighty thousand, three seventy-five at the end of this fiscal year. So that we we do feel confident that if an unexpected opportunity arises, we would have the opportunity as a board to potentially pursue an unintended or, you know, unanticipated opportunity. Secondly, we are in the process of forming a separate five oh one C three called the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Foundation. And that will be a five oh one C three. The board on that organization is made up of CDA board board members and also, excitingly, a couple members from the, it has some community representatives. So it's both businesses, property owners and residents on the board of this foundation. And the foundation will have access to some of some of these great opportunities we've been talking about tonight, potentially funding at the state and county level. These are opportunities that as the CDA is a five oh one C six, did not have eligibility and access to previously. So we're really excited about that. Update on the foundation, it is an organization with the state of Maryland. We are now in the process of putting together our application for five oh one C three status. So we are hoping to have this the foundation codified by the end of FY twenty-two. And lastly, with these adjustments to the license fee, we feel that this gives us a little more leeway to approach some of our larger businesses and property owners for potential sponsorship or opportunities to perhaps pay a little, pay independently and choose to invest in certain projects that we might want to undertake together in a way that might, those conversations might not have been as feasible with the previous license fee assessment rates. So lastly, I just wanted to give a brief overview of what what our program budget looks looks like for this upcoming. what our program budget looks, looks like for this upcoming fiscal year. Forget me here, let me adjust this so I can see. The majority of our budget goes towards maintaining to our, our maintenance services. And this is something that has also been affirmed and approved by our, our business membership and our membership survey that we, that we did in the fall. They are very adamant and, and interested in us continuing our litter pickup services, our planters, our, our landscaping maintenance contracts that we have on Halton Lane and certain common areas of the crossroads. And all those areas of the crossroads that are outside of the direct commercial properties, the areas along New Hampshire and University Boulevard. That also includes our, our welcome, welcome banners that are along University and New Hampshire. So that is 67% of our program budget. That's followed up with our event budget. And, and those events are really an opportunity for, you know, businesses to engage with a, maybe a wider group and to introduce their products and their business to attendees to the events. And there, you know, we've been focusing on Ann Street. This budget has, we've budgeted for one event in FY22 on Ann Street with the, with the hopeful intention that we can also partner with some businesses and perhaps produce a second event on Ann Street in FY22. Lastly, we also invest funds in advertising and marketing. That's, that's things like maintaining the Tacoma Langley, tacoma langley.org website, our, our marketing activities that, that included our budget for the Tacoma Langley Crossroads branded shopping bags that we have. And, and lastly, our budget includes opportunities for business networking, which is again, something that was, was emphasized by our businesses in the membership survey that we did. They were really interested particularly in specific professional groups. For instance, the attorneys in the crossroads being able to network together. The physicians, they were really interested in more opportunities to connect, you know, somewhat informally, just opportunities to gather and, and, and learn from and talk to each other. And then we have, you know, a budget for our holiday decoration at Alton Lane, which is the reset we put up every year, and some funds for replacement infrastructure. That includes, you know, if one of our benches or our planters breaks or a car hits them or something, you know, we have the ability to, you know, address, you know, minor infrastructure challenges or broken infrastructure in the crossroads. So with that, I guess I should stop. Stop, share, okay. Yeah, I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Remind my colleagues that we'll talk about a draft ordinance in a few minutes, but are there any questions regarding the presentation? Councilmember Dubala?
Yes, Kaylee, thanks. That was really interesting. I, I wasn't familiar with a lot of that, that detail. Question about the first of the adjustments you want to make, the cap of 4,000. How did you give 4,000? Are there, what is that? Half of the people, half of the businesses pay, pay more than that? 10 of, you know, a quarter of them, what's the, I guess what I'm asking, what's the distribution of the fees? And, and again, why 4,000, not 5,000, 3,000? Why the cap at that level? What was the?
So this was, so what we looked at is to get an idea of the average cost of light, of business light, the average cost of these license fees in all those other areas that we looked at. And it was, it came, and but then you also have to look at our, there's also our organization and what we've been doing and what we've already invested in. And what we would need to keep that successfully going. And so with those two factors, we arrived at the 4,000.
Okay.
I hope that makes sense.
So the implication is that in many of the surrounding areas, the fees, the license fees are quite a bit lower.
That is correct.
Okay.
And I'd like to hear that. Do you mean then, then the, then where it was before?
CDA's been charging, yeah.
That is correct.
And I would like to submit to the council that many of our fees in the categories were two and sometimes three times as much for the businesses in our, yes, in our area. Kaylee, of course, didn't share the, the, the Excel spreadsheet that we sliced and diced, but I was shocked at the differences, the, the vast difference in fees to be a crossroads business versus some of our surrounding areas.
Any, any ideas why that is? Why that was, I guess, seven years ago?
Yeah, it was seven years ago and it was an escalating fee. It started, you know, at 2014 and it increased yearly. And as Kaylee mentioned, a review at about the five-year point, I think, is important for a couple of reasons. One, we don't want to just kind of sit with something that doesn't fit. And the development is happening, right? Like the Rexeter will be happening. These things will be moving and we want to be able to right-size sooner rather than later. If, and at this point, this is the right size.
We'll just add that there was a, there was at that time, seven years ago, an increase. This process, review process yielded an increase in license fees. And during that time, I am not sure that it, it wasn't framed as this, this comparison of the cost of doing business and looking wider at, at the overall fees. I do not believe that that process was, was undertaken at the time. And there were certain thoughts about the purple line coming and, and things of that nature that have kind of changed over the course of. So we're, we're, you know, Samira and I are both really, really committed to, to fixing any issues that are, that are there and.
That helps a lot. Thank you.
Councilmember Siri.
Well, I just want to thank you, Kaylee, for this great presentation. I think it's the right time and the right steps that the CDA is taking. You know, we talked about right sizing the fee structure because of the inequities between what our business owners pay compared to neighboring jurisdictions. You talked about the fact that so many of our businesses are facing hardships as a result of the purple line construction and also as a result of the pandemic. But I, I think it's also critical to start right sizing, to change and to be a more business-friendly community. We want to tout small, local, well, small, local typically doesn't have the financial backing to be able to pay for substantial fees in order to rent space in a community. So doing, taking this approach, I think, is, is going to be critical. Not just for addressing the needs right now, but also setting the path for how we want to establish particularly the crossroads area in terms of business-friendly environment, especially for our small, local business owners. I think that's spot on. Another thing I'm really excited about is the foundation. I think there's a lot of folks, perhaps a number of my colleagues, that, that don't understand that because of how the CDA is, is codified, it limits the ability to get those external funds. And given that such a large portion of your budget actually goes to things like maintenance, planters, things like that, that would be right for revitalization, beautification grants. I, I think it's going to be a really excellent turn for us to be able to, to take advantage of that foundation. I will say on the Prince George's side of the street, they do, they have that CDC and they are able to, to get grants and they are leveraging their grant making ability to do things like get funds for wayfinding, different types of transportation kind of projects that they have going on. So I think it's going to be really important for us going forward. And I'm so excited for what you and Samira are doing because I think it is kind of shifting us out of a model of fee-based, fee-for-service to development and creating that vision, that ultimate vision of a business improvement district. So I'm, I'm excited about what you all have, have shared and thank you so much for all of your hard work. We, we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Ludlow, did you have questions?
Yes, please. It's not a question. I just want to note that the, the, appreciate the background information about why there's changes here, but what's in front of the council is code language because the CDMA documentation rests in the city code. And so after the work that has been done by the CDA and its discussions and the research that it's been done, that information then needs to be codified. And we generally defer to the CDA for the advice about what, what those numbers are and, and how that functions. The code language has gone through the city attorney. The information that has been presented from the CDA is incorporated in that document. And it does the exact things that were presented, which is it changes the fees, it puts a cap on the fees and it changes the expiration date for the five-year period. So you know, it's, it's one of these things where I don't think, I don't want to necessarily hinder the discussion about how you came up with the fees, but it is one of the things that we basically kind of take the CDA's word for it unless it seems to be causing a citywide problem. And then that gets documented. I appreciate the work that City Attorney's Office did with staff and with the CDAs to get that done. And that's before you this evening.
My, my council colleagues have a copy of that ordinance in front of us, so I don't know if there's any discussion we want to have about that tonight. Any comments or changes we'd like to discuss, questions? Councilmember Siri, I'm going to put you in the hot seat because you're closer to this issue than any of the rest of us. Did you have anything with this ordinance that you wanted to highlight for us?
Um, I, I, I don't. And I think it's, it's pretty straightforward. The only question I do have is whether or not we are making, it doesn't look like we're making any changes to any of the other categories. I know we talked, we talked about professional and making sure that we're changing things from the perspective of the fee structure for them. But for exempt businesses, where there, that's currently in the code, has there been any shift in terms of thinking around who we exempt?
That, that's interesting. That has not been part of the conversation because that exempt language actually comes from the state CDMA code, the, the state CDMA ordinance code. Where they say you can create, a city can create a CDMA, but these parties are exempted. So I haven't explored if it's something that can go further or not, but that's point, point to explore.
Yeah, because it includes things like warehouses and, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, it's all, it's really pulled from the, the state.
From the state.
Code.
Okay. And a warehouse would not include like U-Haul or any kind of storage?
No.
No, okay.
Storage is, is included and well, you always, you know, with us, but.
Yeah, I was thinking the, the public storage.
Yeah, yeah, they're included.
Okay, okay.
To, to, to be clear, the, the reason that this, all of this language is in the city code is that that's part of the state requirement for CDMA's. So so that's, so that's kind of the, the structure that we have to abide by.
So, so basically we have to stick to the, basically the category of businesses as defined by the ICMA, like the broader.
Like CDMA language, we need to research again what that is. I certainly don't know it off the top of my head, but what's in the state, I just know that we're kind of a subset from that state authorization.
Okay, but we can play around, we can determine and we will determine the fees tied to the different categories as defined by that. Got it. Okay, yeah, that was my question I had because it seemed like the, the things were already grouped in a particular way and I wasn't sure if we can muck around with that. Okay.
So then lacking any other questions, my colleagues are ready to bring this back and vote on it soon. Don't hear any objection. I think we're done with this. I thank you, Kaylee, for coming tonight and, and cook gains. Appreciate you being here too and helping, helping this important project. Let's move along to the extension of the contract for auditing services.
Thank you. So as with many of our professional services, we usually have five-year contracts with our various consultants or contractees such as attorneys and in this case, our auditors. The five-year period would end at the end of this next, the accomplishment of the audit and CAFR for FY21. And so it would be about the time that we would go out for a request for proposals again, for audit and financial assistance. This is a tough time to go out for requests for proposals. We are changing obviously the city manager position. We have ARPA funds coming in and we're still going through some of the special things related to the pandemic. What we would like to do is extend the contract with Cone Resnick, which has been providing excellent services for two, a two-year period only. So that the new city manager will have an opportunity to become familiar with the processes. The ARPA funds will be able to be kind of established and, and moving forward. And then a request for proposals can go out for a new five-year contract, which they could apply for, others would apply for. This is something that was requested by the finance director and she was actually hoping for a little bit longer. I said two years. And I do hope that that's something that the council would agree to, given this very special circumstances that we are in at this time.
Does the council have any questions? I would just like to say that in the past I have advocated for changing contractors, audit, audit contractors at the end of the contract. I just think that's a, a good policy, but I've been happy with the current auditor and, and see no problem. I think what you posed is, makes sense. And I like the idea that you limited to just two years. Okay, nothing else. And I hope to see you when coming back to us soon.
I see, I see some council members wanting.
Oh, now they're jumping in, huh? Councilmember Kolar.
Thank you. I just wanted to note briefly, by coincidence, Cone Resnick is the firm that my family, myself and my wife use to assist us with our own taxes. And so I don't know whether it actually constitutes a conflict or not, but I, in the previous time, and again, I will just be voting present when the time comes to vote on the proposal. Just wanted people to understand why I was doing that. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Councilmember Siri.
Great. So I don't have any concerns with.
Um, great. So I don't have any concerns with sticking with the same auditor. One question I do have is, um, our contracting process, when we are staying with the same, um, contractor or the same firm, do we do any market research just to make sure that any renewal costs are comparable at all?
We did not. In this case, the, the, uh, amounts are very similar to our current amounts and they were very competitive, uh, in the previous years. So we did not go in and check with firms at this moment. So we certainly can just double check, but it, they have certainly been shown to be competitive.
Yeah, I think, I, I think in this time it may be okay for us to move forward. Um, in the future, it would be helpful to, to make sure that those policies are in place, even if we're sticking with the same folks, um, to make sure that we're kind of doing our due diligence to get some permits, to make sure that we're getting the best price.
I, I appreciate that. Um, I, you know, in general, I think we should go out to, for requests for proposals, but I, I appreciate that and, and we'll double check.
Great.
Okay, we move on to our next item, resumption, rescinding resolutions 2020-12 and 2020-18 regarding quasi-judicial proceedings by the city's boards, commissions and committees.
Uh, yes.
Yes, thank you.
When, when we went into lockdown, um, part of, you know, remember we didn't know how we would handle certain kinds of, hearings that really required legal packages and, uh, some various standard things that have always been done in person. Um, we learned how to do that for several of the different quasi-judicial committees. Um, and so we kind of watched that carefully, um, pursuant to these two resolutions that were passed in 2020. Um, with the change in the pandemic, um, health emergency easing and with the knowledge that we have now of how to handle these kinds of cases, um, it seems the appropriate time to rescind these two resolutions and have the quasi-judicial hearings, um, be resumed as they had in the past, with the exception of a recommendation that I have to counsel. And that is to, um, encourage these different boards and commissions, uh, to consider at times, um, a hybrid form of in-person and virtual, um, hearings. Um, and so that's something that I think can be part of your committee discussion, but I did want to at least, um, and I, and I recommended putting that in the resolution that that's something that the council, I mean, it's, I guess it's an ordinance. It's a resolution, uh, that the committees could consider best practices that they've learned from during this time of having to do virtual hearings about how they might want to go forward with slightly different processes, um, taking advantage of what they've learned.
Okay, any questions?
I have a question. I think my hand is sort of hard to see with my background.
Yeah, oh yeah, I don't see it.
Um, so I, I think it makes sense to, um, not, um, prevent committees from meeting virtually and to rescind the, the requirement to do that. And of course, I think particularly with the quasi-judicial committees, it, it might make sense to do more in person, um, as they're potentially deliberating on, um, on hearings and other things. Would the change actually require them to meet in person? And would they have the option of still doing it virtually? Because I, I think there might be committees that would actually prefer to do so. Um, and I'd be interested in whether we could actually ask committees if they have a preference and, and allow some of that, um, going forward.
I mean, I, I think that's a discussion that you would have with the city attorney, uh, to find out if there's any, any requirements or issues. And certainly your preference about how you direct your boards and commissions. One of the things that is, I think, important and, and part of why you're even doing the study of the committees is, is considering particularly with race equity, what kinds of ways are easier for people to participate? And then sometimes they're virtual so that they can watch their children or there's transportation issues. And sometimes they're in person because the, they don't have the right computer equipment or whatever to fully participate. So part of this is, um, you know, maybe depending on what kind of a hearing it is and it may depend on, you know, what your, um, what your goals are. In the past, it was just assumed that everything had to be in person. And so my recommendation is that you give some, uh, opportunity for, um, differing versions of, of, um, hearings, um, that would help advance your goals and, and whatever those might be.
Yeah, I, I know we have kind of the bigger discussion about it, what our approach will be with committees as we move forward and make some changes. And I think it's important to have that discussion about the model that we want to have and some of the provisions there. But I also, in the meantime, would, would like this resolution not to preclude committees, from doing some type of hybrid option or choosing to do more virtual, depending on particular members' needs. Um, in the meantime, so if, if.
That's why I wrote it that way.
Yeah, I, I think that would be good.
Yeah, that is why I added that in there, so that there's flexibility.
Okay.
All right, uh, Ms. Dubala?
Yes, thank you. I see, I, I had a similar question about, um, whether the committee members themselves had been consulted yet about, about this, just, just in case there's uh, issues. And I see that you have allowed for, um, well, I guess, I guess it's not a hundred percent clear to me, and this is, this is a city attorney question. Um, whether, whether it allows for completely virtual meetings, um, or hybrid. I guess it does. Okay, never mind. So the questions then are whether, whether it would be a good idea to check, to consult with the relevant committee members, just in case there's, somebody's got a big problem with this. Um, and is there any indoor gathering limit? What is the limit at this point in the county? Not that the tree commission attracts hundreds of people, but just, it, it makes me think what, what limitations are we bumping up against here in terms of using a city facility for a gathering, for a meeting?
So as of, as of last Friday, there are no limits indoor, um, within city facilities. And that's consistent with the county, um, provision. So there should not be a problem of a gathering.
Okay. Except for individuals who may not be comfortable with that because of their own personal vaccine situation or.
That's correct.
Situation, right. So I think it's very important that we keep, keep the hybrid and/or the virtual option out of respect for people who, 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 who cannot for health reasons get a vaccine. Um, thanks for clarifying that.
Mr. Kolar?
Thank you. And on that same point, um, I think it could make sense. We'd have to think more about where there's any actual legal barriers. And we have to think about whether, um, committee members or participants who are members of the public would have access problems because they don't have computers. But I'd like to see us do more than, in the resolution, just urge that the committees consider doing this and think about maybe making it somewhat more of a requirement. Now, I understand that we're in the middle of this whole process that uh, several, my colleagues are leading the effort on to revise how our committees and commissions and boards and so on operate. And so maybe this is slightly premature to try to get into that, but I'm not sure from my point of view, it, it would just, it should just be up to the committee to decide whether they want to do it. We want to find ways to enable more people to participate. So I'll look more at the language, but I think right now it, and I really appreciate that the city manager put it in there. I just wonder whether it could be a little bit stronger.
I certainly think.
Or promoting it.
I, I just wanted to flag it for you and I'm open to any language that you think is appropriate, um, uh, provided that the city attorney also goes along.
All right. Were there any other questions? If not, we will, uh, unless, Mr. Kolar or anyone else, did you have other language you wanted on that? Specific language? Okay. You can, uh, certainly send suggestions to the city manager during the coming week. Okay, and, uh, lastly, we have the, um, discussion of, uh, rescission of the city manager's emergency authority.
Which I think is pretty straightforward. Um, I've not needed to use it for some time. Um, it's, uh, I think appropriate to end it at this time when all of these other things are ending. Um, and, um, it simply rescends it. So it's, uh, it was, uh, written by the city attorney to do it correctly and it's before you.
Okay, questions, comments? Okay, so we, whoa, Councilmember Dubala?
I know you want to go home. Um, you are home. Wait. So where, um, where is the county on this, uh, this sort of thing? In terms, two things, in terms of hosting in-person meetings and in terms of, um, any emergency authorities that, that they might have had, uh, it's, it's, uh, put in place and maybe lifting?
I don't know exactly. Um, they have different kind of operations. Um, but these are, um, these provisions were based on the kind of city activities and the city, um, uh, steps that, you know, that we do locally. So it really wasn't based on a county action.
Yeah, I remember. Um, okay, thank you.
All right. Is there anything else anyone would like to say before we close tonight? I would just like to thank the city manager, my colleagues and city staff for getting me through this evening without making me look too foolish. I appreciate your help and your cooperation. And, uh, with that, we'll be adjourned until Monday night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.